Chapter. We would recommend that the full needs assessment be included as an appendix to the chapter. Then for each of the sections, there are the future needs and recommendations. And again, those were developed in coordination with the department heads and their staff and they're intended to provide a high priority set of actions to be implemented by the town over the next 10 years. After after kind of having those meetings, formulating the content, drafting the recommendations, those drafts were then sent back to the department heads for their review and comment as well. So kind of one of the things that's a little bit different here in this in this chapter than other master plan chapters, you'll find is that a lot of the recommendations aren't your traditional land use recommendations. They're not things that you would achieve through, you know, traditionally at the planning board or through zoning or subdivision or site plan regulations. They're really getting starting to delve into more capital improvement, planning or in programming and thinking more specifically about the town's buildings and infrastructure and how we maintain those and provide for the community into the future. I'm happy to walk through some of the, you know, the different recommendations that are proposed. If you would like, I can pause here if you have any specific questions that you'd like to discuss or any comments that you have on the draft thus far.
Oh, does the board have any questions at this point that they'd like to ask?
Well, I have some questions. I don't know when it's appropriate to ask, but you said something about, you know, the getting any editorial edits or things necessary to move this forward. I'll just make a general comment. I literally have hundreds of red marks on this document.
Okay.
A lot of things from an editorial perspective, like for instance, you know, on the public safety infrastructure, it says there are three emergency services departments. On the following pages, we have two departments of which there are two divisions within fire and rescue.
Okay.
Consistent naming and verbiage within departments, across departments, you know, that are referred to by different names within the document. So there needs to be a general cleanup of this thing in order for us to move forward. So with that general comment, uh, let's see. The recommendations with respect to the cemetery, I did notice that, you know, they were talking about, there seemed to be a decrease in usage and purchases of lots because of alternate burial, well, burial alternatives. I know that in some cemeteries, they've had like, you know, crypts or vaults there for people, for urns, for people that are cremated. One of the things I didn't see in the future needs or recommendations to evaluate, you know, whether should be additional consideration given to alternate methods as part of high growth cemetery.
Okay.
Also, under future needs or recommendations for the public safety infrastructure, under number three, um, it talks about that the, in looking at improving the infrastructure in the public safety complex, that we need to have a conference room that could be used by town residents and volunteer boards to host meetings, workshops and other public forums. Well, I think those needs are going to be taken care of at new town hall. Specifically, it has meeting rooms. I would expect it will move our planning board meetings and select board meetings to the new town hall when it's complete. So that doesn't seem like something that's appropriate or no longer needed in this particular set of recommendations. So that's on page 10.
Yeah.
I also have a question on page 10, right at the bottom. Under, it says, explore models from other parts of the country to advocate for a district fire chief that would be responsible for administering multiple departments. So does that mean we would be eliminating our town fire chief? I think that's a pretty significant move that would need to be discussed.
Okay.
And that appearing in a recommendation here, I think is a little bit premature. Just my opinion. Editorial, so editorial. Okay, on page, uh, on page 14, you're discussing, uh, why, you know, police calls go up in the summer. It's at the bottom paragraph on page 14, uh, and it talks about some things about teenagers out of school. I don't know. I question whether that's a reason for increased calls. That seems like a rather presidential statement about teenagers. That may be true, but I question the validity of that statement. One of the things that is here though, uh, is influx of tourists. We have a lot of people that come in on the lakes in Barrington. So there's actually the population rose in the summertime. So I, my question is, is that an influence on the number of calls that they get?
Sure. I'm sure this can be validated by looking at the police call records and what they're for.
Right. Uh, page 15, there's, it's talking about the KLA certification. And in the discussion paragraph in three, it says that that the department would need to hire a full-time KLA accreditation manager, do nothing to work on attaining certification. It would take approximately two to three years. But then when I look at the recommendation below it, it says, one of the responsibilities of deputy chief should be to demonstrate compliance with KLA standards to work towards KLA accreditation within the next five to 10 years. So those statements seem inconsistent. You know, it is, is the plan, is recommendation to do that? Or is the recommendation to assign it to a deputy chief position, which is also one of the recommendations? And therefore work on that over a five to 10 year period. On page 16, number six, in order to reduce risk and regulatory requirements, the current building space needs renovations, dot, dot, dot. How, uh, how would a renovation reduce a regulatory requirement? That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
To meet regulatory requirements, but renovating a building wouldn't reduce regulatory requirements.
Right.
Jeff, just to jump in and in comment to that, when I, when I, as I was reading through some of this, one of the things that stood out is it looks like there, there are actual projects that have been completed that don't look like they've been taken into account in.
I'm going to get into that. There's a department in particular. Yeah. Like the Lego bridge, we ought to fix that. Yeah, I guess we should. But we'd have to deconstruct the new bridge we already installed.
Would it, yeah. Would it be more productive to, would it be more productive to provide a list that we could do instead of discussing each one? I mean, it's, I just don't know how much time we want to vote. It sounds like you do have a bunch, Jeff.
I, I do. And to Andy's point, it's like, uh, it's talking about the Milago Road Bridge. There's a whole section on that. There's some things in the, the whole town hall discussion, like, hey, we ought to have, you know, we're going to develop the town hall, talks about meeting space. It's all designed. I think there's a, a number of updates that have to be done. Same thing with the, with the school, um, when it's talking about schools. There's charts in here about the school as far as what the enrollment is. And yet the narrative contradicts what you see in the graph. So the question is, you know, this was a grass or from a study that was done years ago. And is that still appropriate and supportive when it's in some respects conflicts with the narrative? So I think there are some things I agree with you. Maybe we could mark this up and maybe provide it to them. But I, I don't feel at this time that, given the number of updates and corrections that need to be made, it'd be a great move forward with this.
Certainly fine.
I agree.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, all right. There was other parts I didn't want to, I'm sorry. I cut you off at, uh, started the question. So I don't know if there's other parts of the presentation that you want to go over or the best use of time is to get, you know, a sidebar with the, with all the corrections.
Yeah, I think for us, the most important thing was to have the time to sit and discuss this with you and review the draft. I think this is the first that the draft is, and like I said, it's a draft. It's the first of the draft that's been presented to the planning board. It has been a long work in progress. Um, and we started this, um, oh my goodness, it feels like a while ago now. So there might be some sections that were completed almost a year ago. And I think that, you know, what you're seeing in some instances is reflective of that. So.
Please understand, I don't mean, there's a lot of work that went into this. It's a lengthy document. I don't mean in any way to denigrate or demean your efforts.
Yeah.
You know, time has passed and, and you, you know, we were here to look at, are we going to move forward to have announce a public hearing? I think this is the first time the board's got a real good look at it. And so I think it needs some work before we move forward. But that doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of good information and appreciate the work that you put in on this.
Yeah. And I'll say, I mean, we haven't, we haven't sent it to anyone to do the full like editing, uh, proofreading version yet. You know, because it is that, that, that draft here for first conversation. So.
A question for Marcia. Have, have the other departments looked at this yet?
Well, there was actually a, um, a committee that oversaw this made up of, of town members. So this wasn't something that Steve was on that. And, you know, I apologize for how long this took, but part of it got stalled because of, you know, my medical condition. So some of the things became, came dated. If Jeff, you take a particular interest in, in kind of editing these items, it probably, probably would be really good if you, if you took a active role as we became, you know, got further along so that, um, we didn't keep repeating what we were doing. I, I hope you're willing to, willing to do that. Share your comments and edits so that I think it would help the committee as a whole.
That's very polite of you, Marcia. Yes. Um, and I'm a pain in the butt and I'd be happy to.
All right. Well, it's just. Totally. So, you know, when you're, when you're not embedded within the community and working day to day, you know, every day with the community, it's hard to know the, the finest of details. And so those we really do reply, rely on, on you as board members to assist us with that.
Is there a, is there a file that somebody could send me that I could, I mean, it'd be a lot easier than trying to transcribe handwritten notes on everything?
Yeah, most definitely. Um, I, I don't, Marcia, should we just follow up with you tomorrow morning?
Yes. Well, Kyle, Kyle took a lot of notes, so I'm, I'm sure Kyle, you know, will be able to provide the backup information.
Oh, yeah.
He did the draft, so.
Yeah. Jeff, we're looking to get a Word file version of this. Is that what you were saying?
I'm sorry.
Let me try and shut my.
Yes, I think a Word version would be helpful because we have a PDF version, but I have PDF editor, so that gives me a little bit of flexibility, but I don't know if everybody has that.
I, I don't have the PDF editor. I do have Word and I'd appreciate if I could get a Word document.
Sure. I'll, I'll just make sure we forward that, that Word file version to Marcia and Barbara first thing in the morning.
Okay.
They can get to you. Okay.
Right. Let's, uh, and if we could take the opportunity now, just open up public comment real quick, see if there's anyone out there. I see Steve's got, it looks like he had his hand up. If you want to, were you saying something, Steve?
Yeah, I have a few big picture comments. Uh, so, uh, some things beyond the out of date stuff. Also, current events have changed things a little bit for me. For instance, the response time, six minutes and 45 seconds, sounds really good in general. But in the context of a pandemic, if you might not be able to breathe, that's a long time and it's also an average. I would be interested in knowing what the full range was. Additionally, under police service call types, uh, the, uh, the types of calls I'd be interested in having this broken down by a little differently, uh, would include things like, how many of these calls involve an underlying mental health disorder? Or a threat of suicide or substance abuse or homelessness? Or any other type of underlying issue that would make a police officer not necessarily the most appropriate person to effectively address the situation? Uh, I know in, uh, on the other coast, for the last 30 years, there's an organization called Kahoots. It's an acronym that for the last 30 years has had, uh, EMT and social work people pared off to take from dispatch particular calls that were especially appropriate to them. Of course, they don't have a badge. They don't have a gun. They don't have a uniform. So they're, uh, they have a lot more credibility with the people they're talking to potentially. Uh, and it's a less threatening situation. So I'd be interested in seeing the nature of the call broken down differently in that graph. And also, uh, under, uh, what was it? Recycling center. In the various presentations I've been going to of regional planning, I've certainly been learning about the problems we're having with solid waste. And, uh, if we are going to be part of the solution, our recycling center really should be doing a lot more about sorting and effectively, uh, not contaminating, uh, these potentially valuable materials so that they will actually be utilized instead of being landfillled because we're running out of space. Uh, those were the main things I wanted to bring up at the moment.
Thanks, Steve.
Did any other members have questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Um, if there's anyone in the public that would like to ask a question or make a statement about, uh, this chapter, we'd love to hear your input. A hearing done will close public comment. If the board has no further questions or comments at this time, I'd like to thank Jen again. And, um, you've got Jeff and Marcia, and you will be in contact tomorrow and over some of the editorial stuff. And see what the next, next iteration looks like.
Most definitely.
And I will, I will reread it again and, uh, and pass things on more specifically.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
Jamie, if I could have the word into that as well, that would, uh, I'll make my edits there. That way everybody else, um, can get them.
Yeah, I think we ought to coordinate this through Marcia and, you know, she can give it to us. We can give her the feedback and she can merge the comments.
Yeah. And disseminate it to the board so we can review it and I'll be up to, up to date next, next time we join again to look at this.
Hey, Marcia, going back to what you said, yeah, I understand there was a committee of people that were working on it that the different departments represented. My question was more along the lines of, have they seen the actual graph of what that, of what was produced?
That was shared. The draft was shared.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you again, Jen. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And if you think of anything else, like you said, Barbara and Marcia know how to get ahold of both Kyle and I. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number five on the agenda, we have, uh, Al SD's Mill Falls Realty LLC request by applicant to adjust boundary lines for those commercial storage office units with a 9.6 special permit and the wetland buffer and a 3.4 conditional use permit. Uh, Al, are you speaking tonight? You have someone here for you? Bob is here. All right. Hi, Bob. How you doing?
Hi. Good. How are you this evening? Thank you. Um, we, we are back. We've, uh, been, been had a couple of continuances here. And we, I think we followed the category, uh, that was just discussed at the beginning of the meeting where, where you didn't get our new material one week before the, the planning board meeting. But where this has dragged out a little bit, we did have an opportunity to address the comments from DuBois and King. It seemed like we were fairly close to the finish line here. And, uh, so we made an effort to get things in and, uh, hope that it was straightforward enough that the board would, would be able to review things with us tonight. The, the initial meeting we had and did approve a couple of the line items there, the boundary line adjustment was approved. The conditional use permit was approved. We, uh, got hung up a little bit on, on the, uh, 9.6 special permit that, that we've, we've worked on a little bit, one in reducing our, our impact to the buffer a little bit and, and reducing our, our pavement input, um, into the buffer. And if I could share my screen, is that, is that okay with you guys?
Yep. Yes, that's fine.
So if we look at, uh, up on the screen here now is a flashing plan. That's not working out that good. Um, but anyways, what we've, is that annoying? Or can people follow that? We've got this section through here that was our, uh, our previous impact when the, when the residential driveway was constructed through here. The dark brown stripe is, is the residential driveway that was built about 15 years ago at the skirt that the wetland buffer through here. And this tan area was, was the other side of that, that impact that was basically ineffective as a buffer anymore. So that, that, this area here was pretty much, um, again, in the area that had, had been, the functions and values there changed. The areas that we are impacting, we've got a couple of areas here, um, at the pond and a culvert outlet where in order to get the, the grades that we need to do, uh, to get the water where it's going, our outlet devices are, are within the buffer. Uh, but our, our main impact is, is through here where we've got, uh, again, just where, where these two wetlands come to a pinch point. We've a small 1,500 square area of pavement that goes through there. And our, uh, our area that is grassed or, or, um, will return to natural is about 3,800 square, square feet. So I'm going to stop sharing this because I don't think it's, uh, helping there. If I can. So anyways, that, that, that's the special permit. We, we've got that, that number down a little bit. It's, um, I think we've, we've, some of the comments that we had when we were initially were, again, the clarity on what the disturbed areas were, the prior disturbed areas versus new disturbance. And again, I think the new, the new plans demonstrate that. On, uh, last Monday, we got the comments from DuBois and King relative to the third party peer review on our, on our drainage. And, and that's the, the new material that, that we did submit on Thursday, uh, that was relative to, to their comments. And there's an attached letter that, that, uh, their comments were very straightforward. A lot of applicable comments that they made that we were able to address and get back to them. I, I know that they, they weighed in today that, that they haven't done a thorough re-review, but felt that things were, um, manageable and, and, uh, they were comfortable that we had, had, uh, had, had things headed in the right direction on, on that. Our AOT permit is in with the state and is, uh, being reviewed. And last week we did provide them the additional information that we provided for DuBois and King. So as they get into their review, they, they'll have that updated information as well. Um, other than the third party review, I think, I think last time we were here with any substantive discussion, I think things were fairly well received and have been chipping away at, uh, the comments from, from, from staff. And, uh, I'm hoping that we're in position to, I hope we get conditional approval this evening. But I'm certainly happy to answer questions. Uh, Al, Al is here to answer questions and, uh, whatever, whatever, you know, concerns you have, we'll see if we can address them.
Thank you, Bob. Does the board have any questions?
I had a question, um, following up notes from the Eyes and Glass River Local Advisory Committee. Um, they had made a bunch of comments or notes, and I was just curious if there was a plan to address those items.
I think that, um, the majority of what they had to say was, um, a dissertation of, of a lot of the facts that we presented. The, the site does have a fairly high water table. Uh, they, they identified, you know, what, what the areas are concerned are. I think the, the two, the two substantive things that they were hoping to have addressed were, were one was, uh, the inspection program and how, how is that handled? And how do they make sure that that's handled? And we've outlined a maintenance and management plan for all the stormwater infrastructure that is, is built into the condominium documents for the, for the project to ensure that they, they get done by, by management on, on a, the prescribed basis. Most of them are, are three or four times a year with, with an annual reporting. So I think that the mechanisms are in place for that concern. And I think their, their second concern was, was or comment was relative to the, uh, not analyzing the hundred year storm. And, uh, that's just something that, uh, isn't, isn't commonplace that, that both Barrington and the state AOT is requirement is at a, at a, at 50 year. And as well, we use the extreme weather data in the, the 50 year. So it, it's a pretty dramatic rainfall that we do analyze for. And, and, uh, all the drainage report shows that that certainly handles, uh, our, our infrastructure certainly handles that adequately. But we did not look at the hundred year storm.
Is that something that, do you anticipate seeing a significant difference in the rain totals with the hundred year storm? I know we have had, we're having more and more events that tend to align with that category.
Yeah, I think a lot of that is addressed though, within the extreme weather data, uh, that we don't use the straight SCS rainfall data anymore. We use the extreme weather data. And, and, and so what, what was, used to be called a hundred year storm now, now is really built into the 50 year storm. Our, our, our stormwater bio retention area, again, with the, the 50 year storm, extreme weather, we, we don't have any, any, um, our, our, what we call our spillway. Oftentimes we use as an additional outlet device for, for even for the 50 year storm. It may go over the berm within the riprap area, uh, but in this case we don't. The, the storm is completely contained the, within, within the pond. So there is certainly some overflow capacity there from, from the 50 year storm, but we, we did not analyze the hundred.
Well, if you remember, uh, recently this issue came up on another project. And in fact, the state, uh, required you to use the 50 year, uh, event that's specifically on the form to determine if you're going to overflow the berms in your detention ponds or not. So that's, that's actually the state that's driving the use of 50 year event. Uh, Andy, your question in the document that Eyes and Glass River, uh, Local Advisory Committee submitted, the difference in rainfall for the 50 year and 24 hours versus the hundred was 6.98 inches versus 8.33 inches.
Right. It was just under two inches. I was just curious if that, I mean, I don't, two inches in 24 hours is, is a lot of water, but I don't know what the impact is on that. And I know one of their concerns was around, um, how water made it from that site down with a deemed aff. How water from that site down a deemed a fairly steep embankment to the Isinglass River.
I guess.
Yeah, but oh, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so so our we we do have an our the water that leaves our site now. We do exit through our our culvert and it's appropriate. I would say it's it's not a dramatic slope down here to the to the brook. We probably within 30 feet or so from that outlet, we enter into the brook. Which again traverses down to the Isinglass in a in a pretty pretty regular manner. There's no signs of extreme erosion or anything that there's there's nothing that that is. Shows any issues going on there that it's a highly erodible. The whole area out there is very, very clay, very tight packed soil. So we're not we're not seeing a lot of erosion. Our pond in the 50 year storm acts like that. In a hundred year storm, it would utilize some of the emergency spillway that that is ripped wrapped over the top of of the berm. But again, focuses the the water be focused in that same location where within within 50 feet. It 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 ties into that brook and and flows as it normally does down to the Isinglass. So I don't see any, again, odd erosion issues or or sizing issues. It's just we're going to get some water over over the top of the berm through the appropriate riprap area, but over the top of the berm.
Gotcha.
The other issue that they brought up had to do with the two septic systems. Given the high seasonal water table. And proximity where you've got water flow, you know, off property directly into the Isinglass. Then, you know, the 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 concerns there about migration from the septic systems. Can you address that?
Sure, that that again, we've got two systems. We have one up close to the front of the site that services that that first building that goes in on on the right. And again, it's there's there's no magic to it. It's it's a normal, it's an advanced enviros septic system. That will handle that one building is designed for the the minimum size. System that we can design for is 300 gallons a day. We anticipate that building using much less than that. But but that's at 300 gallons a day, has the appropriate setbacks to to wetlands. And and definitely a sizable distance from 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 the river. The other one is 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 down at the the very lower end of the site that handles the balance of the units. We have a a closed system where we collect the 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 waste from the individual units. Collect it then empty it into a a common septic tank for the for the project and then into that field. That actually was one of the anomalies of the site that 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 was probably the best soils that we found on on the site. That's gonna that's gonna work appropriately. We most of the site, the water table was was 15, 18, 22 inches. That lower septic system that handles 90% of the flow, we we found water table at at almost four feet down down there. Was a totally different soil and and definitely appropriate for the the septic.
I have a question or more of a.
Yes.
Bob. Would it be possible to show the black and white copy of the special permit plan?
Yeah, let me see if that works better than the flash.
Great, thanks.
We're getting there. Apparently, that's just a difficult plan. This is the this is the special permit plan that again is seems to be in in flash mode. I apologize. It's just not gonna. That 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 doesn't seem to be be working.
Everyone has it in their packet if they want to take a look at it.
My number five seems to be sparse. I don't know if I picked up my packet. I'm looking on I'm looking through my emails, downloads and stuff as I. And.
I believe it's.
The rest of the board have any other questions?
No, I believe.
It's what, Andy?
I I was just gonna say, I believe it's sheet number SP4A that they that we're trying to put up on the screen. Is that correct?
Well, the the special permit is is actually a little bit further down is SPP1. It's almost at the end of the set. That that specifically shows the the impact areas within the the buffer impacts.
I'll just. Jamie, I I'll just note that. You know, I I got my set of these plans yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
I had.
Yeah.
I I read the a couple of documents, the the letter from Isinglass River Local Advisory Committee. I read the responses to DuBois and King from Tri-Tech. But I had appointments today, so I I have not had an opportunity to review these plans. So.
And I don't.
If we're gonna move forward, I gotta tell you, I'm gonna have to recuse myself because I just haven't had any time to review the plans to make an informed decision.
And I don't know if they emailed out, Marsha, because I don't I've got the I've got the the new. I've got the notice of decision and the new plan, but I don't have. I didn't I didn't see those letters in an email. From the Isinglass, and I don't know if it's older. I'm not looking back far enough.
They had it around for a bit, but Barbara did email everything out. The.
I've got the nine point six in the new in the new plan, but I didn't see. Maybe I didn't go far enough back. Do we need do you need more time more time for the nine point six, Jeff, as well? Is that what you're saying?
Jeff, you're muted.
The the Isinglass plan note was sent at 32 on Monday.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information that come in recently. I I I'm just saying, if the rest of the board has reviewed all these materials and they're ready to go, so be it. I'll just recuse myself, but otherwise, I feel like I need more time to review this.
In this vein, when I look at the. If I go to the agenda and then look at the documents posted on the website related to this. Maybe I'm not looking in the right spot, but is there where is the nine point six in these documents that are public?
The nine point six was put out originally. They've sent in a revised plan to go with it. They've updated it. But the original, the original application was months ago.
You're saying it was part of the larger document. I just didn't see it. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, unfortunately, when when applications hang out there for a few months. It's harder to go back and find all the information, although it's all.
And to that to that, again, we again, I apologize for the timing that I understand that that this was late. Just again, due to the fact that this has hung around a while. And the fact that that there's there's not going to be another meeting in July. We 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 were hoping that we could get through it this evening, but if it if it's not appropriate, then we we understand.
Can I suggest that if you guys have any extra questions that you kind of. Field them out now so that, you know, he can he'll have a better idea? Or you just don't have enough information to even continue looking about looking at?
The revised nine point six.
That was recent, too. He just sent that in with the others.
All right, I because I don't have.
Yeah.
I I did know there was.
It's it's that plan he was trying to show you. That.
There's above. Yeah, there's above 5,400 square feet of affected soil, 5,300 square feet of disturbance area. 1,500 impervious, 3,800 pervious. But if it's if it's the board's board's decision to try to put this off for more time to review, that's perfectly. Within the purview of the board. I'm just I'm pulling up. I found those other documents. I was just looking over.
I have something else. Sorry.
That's all right. I was hoping you could get through the nine point six because that's been out there. I mean, that's from the original and they did reduce the impact considerably. And this was an existing curb cut driveway in the area that's showing the impact. So a lot of that was impact from the original driveway that that's there. I didn't know if that would help you out at at all.
Hey, this is Ron. Question. The Isinglass River Advisory Committee letter. Did that have one was that a one page document or multiple pages?
One page.
Okay, it just kind of ends kind of abruptly. So I was wondering.
It should be two pages.
Really?
Yes.
Is it two?
The second page starts with would particularly like to know why. Try tech engineering corporation, the agent for this application, the hundred year storm calculations. That's where we had the kind of further discussion around that.
I I just went through my emails and I guess Barbara sent out the updated nine point six at one o'clock this afternoon.
Yep.
Marsha, I'm still not finding where the nine point six is in the larger application. Can you point me to the correct file?
It's okay, in the actual app, it's not a separate like. It's it's included in the plan set, the drawing are included in the plan set. It's not a several separate application.
So 2020 Barrington Storage Office Revised Plan 72?
It's.
Barbara just sent it to you.
Yeah.
Or sent it to all of us.
Yeah, it's a rather thick plan set.
But she sent the nine point six with the two pages, three pages referencing it and the plan set showing the. The three little impacted areas in the plan set or two impacted areas.
You had discussed it originally and had comments. We wanted to hear from DuBois and King on on their review. You've gotten their review.
And I think that's what Jeff was, you know, not having time to fully go through, I think, is is some of his hesitation. I keep finding and losing that way to go.
It's the it's the page before the fire truck, if that helps.
Yeah, it's it's almost at the end of the plan set back with the lighting and the landscaping.
Well, Marsha, I didn't see any comment for DuBois and King about the intrusion on the the wetland buffer.
Right, and I I don't I. I don't want to call it insignificant, but it 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 probably did not raise an eyebrow with them. There's no impact to the wetland itself. But that was, you know, you they had when I looked back at the minutes from the meeting, that was the comment you had you had made. Now, we can ask them about that, but like I said, this is actually mostly an existing impact.
Again, I as I recall, the the comment about DuBois and King back then, I think the concern was. Without them having been through the drainage, there may be modifications that would change the permit request. And I think at this point, we've we've got it pretty well narrowed down from them that that we're on point with our design. And we may have some tweaking, but it's not going to change our our impact area.
To that point. Is there any possibility that the view or the alteration in terrain that they would come back with something that might change that?
You know, I I I had a pre application meeting with with them and and. Before we made our formal submission, which was during the the COVID period here. We did a couple of online meetings with the reviewer. And I'm 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 comfortable that we're on point with with AOT, particularly with with incorporating the comments from DuBois and King. And I think we've got it pinned down pretty well.
To that point, Marsha, I mean, is it appropriate to approve a nine point six if the AOT comes back and they have to change things? Are they gonna have to come back to readdress the nine point six?
I mean, that's always a possibility, but we, you know, we can't hold this application up based upon other state permits. That's the law, you know, we have to continue to process that. They, I mean, they could come have to come back. I don't know. They could be waiting for a while for their permit.
But it'd be on the.
It would be on them.
But if something comes back in the AOT, it would be on them to come back.
Yep, they'd have to come back, and that's that's not unusual.
Does the board feel comfortable moving forward with the nine point six?
Well, procedurally, my concern is I'm not finding. I did receive it through through the email, but I would still like to see where it is in the public documents as far as notice goes.
That this is part of the plan set that was given to you a couple of weeks ago.
I think Steve is referring to the public's access to it.
Oh, well, they've they've had the plans also.
But I'm not finding I'm not finding the nine point six in any of those plans.
Then the nine point six is in a separate permit. It's a the permit that was actually part of the original documents when the they were submitted months ago.
So so 2019 Storage Office Plan 1112? November, December. So that that could be it. I'll look at that. It doesn't appear to be in that document either.
So Mr. Stoll, what what changed on the nine point five between the original submission and this one?
On the on the nine point six?
Oh, excuse me, nine point six.
Well, we 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 again, after after the. The original public hearing was was the the December meeting, actually, we talked, we talked it through. And my understanding at the time was was more more the the clarity of my plan. And and the fact that I hadn't hadn't delineated the existing impacts versus proposed impacts, which we've tried to clarify. And as we did go through our 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 final design, we are able to address some of the grading a little bit. As as you go through that one wetland area, wetland buffer area. As you approach the first. Not the not the first five on the right, but as you approach building number six on the left. We're able to change the grading in that area where we're able to reduce reduce the amount of impact there. So again, I from from our standpoint, we 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 provided additional clarity on on the plan itself. And and we reduced the amount of amount of impact to the buffer.
Yeah, as I recall, I'm looking at SPP1. So there was already the entrance road that went through. The wetland through the buffer area adjacent to build build our units one through five. So the impact we're talking about is on the corner by unit six. So the impact we're talking about is on the corner by unit six. And also a very small area. Next to the bio retention area in the southeast corner. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
The original application asked for the nine six. It's the very one that you got in the very beginning, Steve. They asked for the three point four and the nine six in the very beginning of the application. And it's been on hold because the board said they'd like to see the drainage first.
Yes, yes, I found it now. It's two thousand nineteen, one, 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 two, the second document on the, yeah, it's there.
And just to confirm, there was no contradictions with DuBois and Kings, everything they noted in the drainage that it was all taken care of on the. Plans that it looks like reading through.
Yes, we, we, we felt they had good comments, you know, typos that fell through the cracks and things. And I, I think it was a straightforward response. No, 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 nothing that we debated. We, we addressed them as, as requested.
And I'll add, they are doing a, a second review just of, to make sure all those changes were made. And, you know, my comment had been, well, those are things we could also include in a, if it was a, in a draft notice of decision, you know. So they really had addressed everything. That would be just be a, a small comment. If you did that. Doesn't look like you're headed there, but I'm just saying that's how we would normally handle it.
Say that again, Marcia, I'm sorry.
So it doesn't look like you're, you know, you may vote on the nine point six. It doesn't look like you're headed towards a conditional approval based upon. You know, the comments I've heard. But typically, when we, we get down to so few comments from DuBois and King. We put them into the notice of decision as a requirement that they address. Confirm that they've addressed DuBois and King's comments. We don't just leave it hanging out there. We make it a condition of approval.
Given that, you know, I, I was able to call up, we've seen the nine point six before. All they've done is reduce the area, which is a positive. And I just sat here and used that one sheet, SPP one. So I guess with respect to the nine point six, not necessarily the whole application, the nine point six specifically. I'm comfortable moving forward for my personal.
Everybody feels the same way. I think at this time, we'll open up public comments, see if the public has any. Comments or concerns in regards to the nine point six and see if we're able to move forward. Is there anyone that has a question or comment in regards to the nine point six permit for this application? Very, very quiet tonight. Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll close public comment.
I could ask the chair, just to remind people, I see there's three folks that are on the, are in the meeting by telephone. You could just remind them how to unmute their phone, just in case they don't know how to do.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, star six will unmute your phone. If you're trying to speak and no one's responding to you, we apologize. And if, if that helps. And if we've ignored you by accident, we'll certainly open up public comment again if we need to in the future. But at this time, we'll close public comment if the board has any other questions.
This is Ryan. I have one question. It seems like the impact to, the new impact is largely due to units six and seven. What will be the impact if those were deleted from the plan?
Well, it, it's, it's in the area of six and seven, but, but again, where, where we've gone to. If, if you look at sheet. That immediately follows the SPP one is, is the circulation plan. And we talked about it, the, the original meeting. That, that Al's program here is, is. Again, a lot, a lot of this is going to be for RV storage. And so we, the geometry of the site needs to work so that, that you can get the, the RVs around there, get the fire truck around there. So it's, you, you can't, you can't just bob and weave like it was your driveway. The geometry tells us that, that if, if we, if we swerve to, to the left there to avoid that, that wetland area. To have the proper geometry to come back in, it's not, it's not two units you wipe out, it's, it's six units. So it's, it's a pretty dramatic, pretty dramatic difference. If, if that, if that makes any sense, but, but it, again, it's. Just the fact that it's twenty four foot wide, the, the axis is, is curved and is intended for, for large vehicle traffic. It's, you, you can't just out around the wetland and swerve back in. It's a, it's a dramatic effect.
If I'm looking at this correctly, just estimating roughly, so you're talking about an maximum. Intruding into the buffer area, twenty five to thirty feet on. Adjacent to unit number six.
Yeah, with, with the grading, we're, we're probably thirty feet with the, by the time you finish the grading. You, you've got probably maybe twenty, twenty feet at the worst point of the pavement, but another ten feet of grading.
Okay, thanks.
It's, it's, it is quite a wet site. I think it's fairly minimal. Under the circumstances, trying to use this piece of property to some good, it seems like it's not too intrusive. And if the board feels the same and we're ready to move forward on this, or if there's more comments.
Jamie, I just had a question on, on the. Statement that was made about it wiping out. Because if I, I look at the scale. Based on the turning radius to go around the units down at the bottom. Would agree that there is an impact. Of four sites, but I don't, I can't get six in a wipeout on that. And using, that's using the turnout and the turn, the turnaround to come back up. The other side using that full, that full loop from one side to the other.
Yeah, we're, we're starting at. At, at like station, station three plus twenty five. Around station three there, which is the end of building five, we're, we're actually starting a curve to the right. To, to, to pull down away from the, the, the wetland to the north. We're starting to pull down to the, to the right so that we get the separation for that whole, that whole row. So if, if instead of, instead of swinging down, if we swing up. Again, we're gonna, we're gonna end up with a curve to the left. And, and again, the geometry tells us that we don't want to, we don't want to come into a reverse curve. We're going to have a tangent before we come back into a curve to the right to get down to where we need to be. It, it, it takes, it takes some distance to do that properly.
Would, would that be the case if you went counterclockwise rather than clockwise? Would be traffic pattern?
It, it's, it's two way traffic all, all, all around. The, the, the vehicle we showed was going, was going counterclockwise, but, but it is two way traffic. I think the, the movements, yeah, we're, we're. Oversized, that, that's the five track, but, but we, we've done the turning movements to make sure that. Then again, the, the, the motorhome can get in, into the unit. That there's a lot of, a lot of logistics of how they will site it.
Where does the drainage from that particular area go?
That, that, that is all curved from, from station. Actually, actually from the, from the whole road. Down through, we, we bring it all down to that one, that one pond. It's a closed, closed system. And, and again, we had a good area down there where the soils were the best. That we brought all, all the water from that site to that, to that one location.
Yeah, so I get, you know, the idea behind the buffer is to protect the wet. So if that particular area is going to be impervious surface. And but the water from that area is going to be taken to the bio retention area. And that sounds like it, it's protecting that wetland area because we're using that filtration system.
That, that is, that is correct. None, none of that impervious surface flows to, to that wetland. It, it, it's all, all sent down to the bio retention and, and released after, after treated.
I'm assuming that I can look at that somewhere else in the plans. That, that's addressed somewhere else in the plans as far as where.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite, I didn't quite get that.
Yeah, the, the drainage from that particular area of the impervious service around unit six and seven. I assume it's elsewhere in this new plan set. It, it has.
Right. Right, four, four, four and four B. Or four and four A are your drainage plans that show where the catch basins are, are located. So if we look at, at sheet four. Right off, right opposite eleven, between, between eleven and forty. There, there's a, a catch basin there that, that's collecting the water from in front of. In front of six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. It's all going to that one basin. That's a, that's a deep subcoated basin. And then it diverts over to the drain manhole. And then you can see on SP four A, where that drain line continues down to. Between units seventeen and eighteen where it, it takes a turn and discharges into the bio retention area. But that, that whole side there is, is curved, so this, there's no water getting off the pavement to, directly to the wetland.
All right, I was just going to ask that question. So there is curving. Along the roadway between. Unit five in over to eleven where that catch basin is, so runoff is directed to that, that drain?
That, that is, that is correct.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but this is the problem. Well, we don't get the plans to review, you know, before the meeting.
Understood.
I don't have any further questions about the nine point six.
We are at a point where it would be appropriate to hear a motion to approve the nine point six. If there's no objections or other concerns. You're looking for a motion, Jamie?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the. For two twenty dash fifty four dot one and fifty four dot seven two dash R C slash. G R dash O L slash nine point six for Albert. Paul's realty.
I second.
A motion by Knapp and seconded by Brand. Roll call, vote Allard.
Allard, nay.
Knapp.
Aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, nay.
Brand.
Brand, aye.
Jennison, aye. Three to two, the nine point six is granted. Do we have further business on this at this time, Marcia? I'm jumping from document to document online and. Want to make sure I don't miss anything.
The.
Lot line adjustment.
The lot line adjustment's already been approved. So as you're just looking at the, the overall site plan now.
Jeff, would you prefer more time to look at that before we. Dig into that?
Well, I would, and, but if the rest of the board. I'll just recuse myself.
I also appreciate more time, this is Alice.
I agree as well. Andy, would you concur? And Steve, yes?
Um, yes, although I would like to raise one other, other thing before we move forward.
Yes, I'd like to address it. Any question, any questions you have at the time would be great, so they know.
So I'm looking at the document on rules. Rules and regulations for the condo. And under commercial use, I remember in a previous meeting, I was raising the question, for instance, could there be a doctor's office there? And you're like, oh, no, definitely not. But under seven, commercial use, it doesn't really spell out. Why or that, for instance, a doctor's office requiring a lot of parking spaces. Would not be allowed, as far as I've been able to see. Maybe I'm missing something. Please explain.
Al's probably, probably better to address that. Do you want to address that, Al?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, if it's not written in there, Jim, our attorney worked on that. Then we will definitely have him put that in there about doctor's office there. Try to pull, pull up the document. Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, as I recall from our previous discussion. Al, I, I believe that you folks submitted. You know, what the, the documentation would be, what the, the covenants would be. With restrictions for use. Marcia, didn't we receive those?
Yes, we did.
Did, did those get disseminated to the board or, or not?
You know, I, I, I'm not sure at this point. We can resend them and we can also make sure that usually the allowed uses are listed. Can be listed on the plan and then none that aren't listed are, are not. Appropriate. Would not be allowed.
Does that address your concerns, Steve?
Yes, I'd love to see that again. And that's, that addresses my concerns for now.
I would also ask.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I would also ask to make sure that. The document with the covenants for what's. Also management of the system is detailed in the maintenance and management of the stormwater. Pollution prevention retention system. Everything related to that.
So, so clarify, so, so they're going to have a stormwater maintenance. Plan that's required. You want something in addition to that?
Yes, when we went through. All right, Al, if you could mute, perfect. When we talked about the Eisenhower River Committee, one of the things that came up out of that. Was the concern around. The plan requiring monthly inspection of the catch basins, removal of sediment, sediment oil, grease. As needed, and as we, when we talked through this earlier, they said. They would make sure that that's included in their. Document management plans for the association or the condo. Unit, so I just wanted to make sure that as we circled back to that, that that was captured in those documents.
Absolutely, that, that, in, in the, the association will in fact be the owner. And, and so it'll be clear that that's to be budgeted for, et cetera, et cetera, and, and be in the documents.
Yeah, and just perusing quickly the documents, all I see is, and I don't know if Steve, you can confirm this, but it says other than commercial woodworking. But I don't see any other limitations, and I don't know if I'm reading the right document, I'm going back through them. So a list of, a list of allowed. So a list of, a list of allowed uses, I think would be appropriate for, um, the next meeting, right, Steve? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, yes.
Marcia's gonna send out the, the documents for us to look at, right?
Yes, we'll scan them and send them to you.
It looks like, uh, the document called Storage Condo Declaration might be the, uh, the legal document that spells out more of the rule background.
I believe you're correct.
All right, I'm looking at the right one, but. All right, um, any other questions to, um, give to them before we, uh, move on as far as what we need to see next meeting?
Not here.
Just those clarifications. All right, um.
They need to ask when they want to continue to, I assume from the comments to the next meeting.
Uh, that would be our preference. Ab- absolutely.
And to remind the board, that would be the first, um, Tuesday in, oh, May.
August fourth. August fourth meeting?
Yes.
Yep. And Barbara, would you say there's enough room for them on the August fourth meeting at this time?
Um, just so the board is aware, I will likely not be present at that meeting.
All right, well, let's make sure we can get Donna. Hopefully we'll be back. Um, and, and Barbara, I don't know if you, if you heard me, uh, does August fourth look all right to get them in there? Oh, Marcia, I don't know if you know the agenda offhand.
Barbara's got it. She's gonna. Can you hear Barbara?
No.
Um, Barbara informs me there's only the campground.
Perfect. Great. That works for you, Al and Bob, August fourth.
Yeah, that, that definitely. Thank you.
All right. I like the word only.
As of now.
We're ahead of that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, uh, all right. Thank, thank you, guys. I appreciate you taking this time this evening. I know things were last minute and I think we made some progress. Really, really appreciate it.
Hearing no objections, we'll, uh, reconvene on August fourth for this, uh, application. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Uh, does anybody need a short break or?
Did you guys do a roll call?
Not on the continuance. I can. Sorry.
I think everything is supposed to be roll calls.
All right, my bad.
Is now exiting.
Jensen, I, Bran.
Bran, I.
Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Nap.
Nap, I.
Allard.
Allard, I.
Thank you, guys, for not saying nay after they all signed off. Continue to the fourth. Um, all right, does anybody need a break? Are we all right to move on to the next one?
I wouldn't mind a five minute break.
All right, let's take a quick recess, uh, and, uh, we'll be, we'll be back to, uh, for, uh, the Walker.
You know, I was gonna ask the other, uh, board members while we're waiting for Steve to get that. But, uh, while we're in the process of making some updates to the regulations, even though it's understood that if we approve a site plan or subdivision, uh, and if in the process of acquiring and in particular modifications to the plan is approved, that they would have to come back to the board. Do we wanna make an explicit statement in the regulations that course of acquiring the state permits? This requires modified plans.
Jeff, sorry, with some of the banging around, it was tough to hear you.
Uh, all I was saying is even though it's understood that if we approve a site plan or a subdivision application, then it's to be constructed in, in, uh, according to the plans that we approve. If in the course of acquiring or obtaining state permits, AOT in particular, but it, it could be other permits, that that requires a change in the plans. It's understood that if they wanna do something different than what we approved, they need to come back to us. However, do we in regulations wanna make that explicit statement that says if you are required to modify your plans during that process of obtaining state permits, that you are required to come back before the board and seek a modification until you're approved?
Hey, Jeff, could we do that? Think, uh, just putting a, uh, thinking that one of our standard conditions in the pool?
That's what I was just thinking, Ron. I think we, I think sometimes that conditions of approval letter is, needs to be updated. Um, sometimes you use a template that maybe, you know, and that should go in there, I think, Jeff, would be appropriate. I don't know if there's another place that's more appropriate as well, but I think that's the best place.
Yeah, that's an alternative. Uh, we can do that. Maybe it's time to upgrade the standard form just a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. I think reading it out sometimes, we, I think we come across, you know, times where, uh, it, there's some information in there that's not relative or, uh, redundant. But I think we, I think that could use some cleaning up. Um, all right, if everyone is back, um, I heard Ron, I see Andy, Steve and Jeff. So we'll, uh, resume the meeting, uh, at this time, um.
Jamie, I'd be happy to work with Marcia on that.
All right, that would be fantastic. Um, and if anybody has any, um, comments in regards to that, um, please forward those as well and they can incorporate some of us. Um, next up, we have number six on the agenda, two twenty dash twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Um, Joel, I believe you're here for that.
I am. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. My name is Joel Reynolds and I work with Norway Plains Associates. I'm here to represent the Walkers in a lot line adjustment. I apologize right away as I was reviewing the plan to do my presentation. I, I wasn't a drafts person and I found a few errors here. Amy, look at lot numbering. So hopefully that doesn't confuse anybody, but I'll try to point it out as it, as it happens. Right away on the plan, they're both labeled as lot twenty-nine that. Marcia, Barbara, do you have the colored plan that we could look at that we sent you? That's all right. While she's doing that, that's fine. So lot twenty-seven is, is the smaller of the two lots and lot twenty-nine is the larger one that has frontage on colonial way. The lot twenty-nine is the lot that you got, you, the planning board just gave a site review approval to for last month's meeting. Lot twenty-seven is a smaller lot. It's on Green Hill Road. It's where the Wander and Rick Walker have their residence. It has a well, has a septic system. It's all existing lot record. What they're trying to do is sell the lot twenty-nine to the Anderson welding people and retain a small area for themselves for a buffer. Uh, the buffer is around approximately, apparently, uh, acre and a half. So the lot, when it's done, will be two point four acres. Uh, one of the things we were asked by the John Huckins and Marcia was to supply a plan that showed the, you know, we had a colored plan too, but there's also the plan that shows, they wanted us to show how the building sits on the site of lot twenty-nine. So we did that. So you could see where the approvals are and where the new property line is going to be coming. I'm not sure if there's any other questions you want. I think, I'm, I'm thinking there's gonna be a bunch of questions because of the, the site plan that we had got approval for. So why don't I let the planning board ask me questions at this point then?
Well, why are you making this adjustment?
Uh, the Walkers do not wanna sell the Andersons, the, the entire five plus acres parcel. And they would like to retain some of it for a buffer for their, their house.
Okay, the, uh, in, in looking at, uh, I did have a question. Uh, you know, the planning office had asked if there was, you know, everything was still gonna be constructed in looking at the, the layout and everything. Uh, I only saw one omission with this lot line adjustment and that was on the south side boundary. Up here for the proposed lot line on that one that runs in an angle. There, on the, on the site plan, there was, uh, trees, shrubs that were planted there as a basic paper proper. I don't know if those reflected on the updated plans. Is there still, are you still gonna put the, uh, the original site approval?
Yes, the plant, the, 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 those trees were placed here by request of the Walkers. So this new lot line will keep those trees along that property line, but it will be on the Walker's property so that he can maintain them. But they will be installed for the site.
You know, Joel, uh, clicking away here with paper. With, with the site plan, looking at the site plan and the designation of the shrubs, it, it only looks like a, a, probably a thirty or about a thirty foot section of those trees actually end up on the Walker property.
They all are on the Walker property, I guarantee you.
Okay, I'm looking at the shrubbery that, um, looks like it goes around.
Which plan are you looking at?
I'm looking at the electronic version Walker LL A dash one site layout plan that shows the lot line adjustment and it looks like, um, shrubbery that, um, there's shrubbery that looks like it runs around the Walker house and the shed and then shrubbery that runs right around, along the property line.
That's just, that's just a tree line. That's not, that's where the tree line's gonna be. They're gonna put additional trees out beyond that tree line. That's the proposed tree line that for construction purposes. But they were gonna install a few other trees the other side of that lot line on the rock or on the Walker's property.
Yeah, actually, looking at the original plans, cause I, I actually held on to the ones we approved. And those, those additional vegetative buffer would have been, actually would follow the new lot line on the south edge there. It's not, uh, and they weren't. And, and I think that Andy's right. Yeah, I mean, there wasn't a long length of trees, maybe fifty feet, but it was in direct line between the Walker's house and the new building. Uh, and they would be right along, but on the, uh, Walker's property if the lot line were adjusted.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me other than what we sent you for plans today.
Well, if you look at, uh, C four on your original, uh, on the, on the set of plans, that, that shows the shrubbery.
Does it show the property line?
Uh, it, well, this, on the plans that we based our approval on, on several seats, C three, C four is where it shows those shrubs being planted. Uh, in, in, along a line between the new building and the Walker's house, right along where that property line is, where you're proposing to move the property. Where you're proposing to move the property. You can see the edge on the, on the new plans. It says proposed treatment swale, proposed detention basin. And there's like a, a straight leg that goes up and then dog legs. And it's basically from the corner of that dog leg down to where it says proposed treatment swale. On the Walker's side, proposed lot line adjustment is where those trees would go. But you'd be installing them on the Walker's property. So there with the lot line adjustment. So that's why I was concerned that that won't take place.
It will.
I guess my greater concern is, I mean, because these, these two are in, obviously in business together with these two decisions, but does this lot line make that building, what's constructed more non-conforming? Will that, that the treatment swell and detention bond be in setbacks that are now created by this lot line change?
I could answer. You have a, you actually have a memo, a opinion from the attorney, the town's attorney regarding this and what they're planning to do is is, is legal and approvable. They actually have, are basically have two years to complete their improvements as, as was approved.
And I understand that, but I guess my question is if, if they move that, that line looks like it's on the boundary line. I mean, unless the lawyer looked at it from a conformity standpoint, or is she just assuming they're making it less non-conforming?
No.
Or not less?
It is as right now, it is conforming. She had the plans with her when she did the review. She also had a second attorney look at it. What is, what you see is so close. The thing is, the, the building is completely conforming in the sense that it's nowhere near the property lines. Those, those drainage infrastructure are not considered, they're considered permissive in the, in the setback. So it's not that they're in, in the setback illegally. They can be in the setback anyways.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what would make this non-conforming? Because it still looks like it would be conforming.
Well, so
if there's lot, if there's lot size limitations and now they're diminishing that lot.
The, the lot meets the size.
Not conforming.
So
but yes, the size is conforming. The only thing that makes it non-conforming right, right now is because of the wetland buffer and the wetland buffer does not apply to this lot, at least for two more years. If they do something. So it's basically
And I, I was most concerned with the wetland buffer, but other, other zoning requirements that they're changing. It's a drastic encroachment towards that, you know, property line as opposed to what was previously approved. So you know, if this was two years down the road, okay.
It would still be within the regulations.
Jamie. That's so sorry, I put my hand up. I've been, I've been trying to get a comment in here. So in my
Sorry.
Being, it's okay. My comment being that if you had done the lot line adjustment first, then they would have had to have come and requested relief for the building setbacks because, because of the wetlands buffers. So this created a bypass for that, which is what we approved on was it a lot size of five point, whatever the original size was, I don't remember right now. Was it five point something or? But, but anyway, like moving on from that, so it, it's my general comment is it's a little disingenuous on this because it created an approval that didn't require asking for any relief that all of a sudden now doesn't matter because we approved it with no intention of having a lot line adjustment on it.
And I'm not so much offended by that because it's perfectly okay. And if the timeline was, was a year down the road and, and Mr. Walker asked them to, you know, sell them back some property, it would be permitted. But if that building, and I'm not talking about wetland buffers, I'm talking about the other zoning. They, they, they spoke on wetland buffers and I see that was an end around for the wetland buffer. But if there's other zoning requirements that we're not looking at because we're so focused on the wetland buffer, that it might be, you know, you're building in the setback, not wetland buffer, but building envelope setbacks.
Need other zoning requirements.
Okay.
Right, because it's a I agree with all. It's a large enough lot size. I agree that, that they would meet all their other setbacks. It was just the, it was an end, it was a workaround to not deal with the wetland buffer issue on the front end and bypass it to the backend.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I don't want to be, that the board feels that, that I or Norway Plains did something. This was, was, this was up and about. We, we, right away when this first came to us as a client, we went right to planning and zoning. And we discussed this and they suggested, it was totally their suggestion how this was to proceed and what steps to take. So
we, we No, and I don't, I don't begrudge anyways. It's the whole, that's the whole point of making a lot of record at any point in time. Whether someone does it with a house lot or anything else, they know in 15 years, the rules are going to change and they want to put a clock on that time at that point. So to me, that's not disingenuous at all. It's the whole point of making a lot of record that you do. So you go on it. I'm encroachments after the fact, not the wetland change of rule stuff. You know, because I think you're within your, your, your means to use the rules to your advantage. So that doesn't bother me. I just want to make sure we're not so focused on the wetland buffer that we're missing other little things.
I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you are going to miss anything because we, we, we're aware of this lot line to begin with. So when we did the site plan, we came up with, with this lot, we came up with the site plan first. That was how all was governed here. If, if Rick had his rather, I'm sure he would rather have only given them two acres if he could. So what we did is we started what the building needed to be, and then what could be given back to Rick if, if any. So we, it, it does meet zoning, we call the setbacks. It's a lot loading, we got the septic assistant design. We're going to have to go for this to, this has to, because it's going to go from five, over five acres to under five acres. We have to get state subdivision approval for this lot 29 as well. So
That's, that's the reason why we asked them to show this plan that I got up on the screen now to show that even that lot with the approvals you got on it complies with all current zoning.
I seem to recall, excuse me. I seem to recall there's some sort of rule around percentage of upland area you need to have. I, I'm not remembering the details, but perhaps one of you other folks do. What is the, how much, what percentage of upland does a lot need to have to be developed?
It's not based on percentage. It's based on a total number. You need 40,000 of upland soils. So that lot, even though it's, what is it, three acres now, you still need less than an acre of upland soils. It's not a percentage of the lot. It's a total amount.
And that's noted on the plan somewhere. I'm sorry. I was going to say that, that up, upland.
Joel, when your plan does, the total upland soils along with the total amount of
Yes, but that's we, just be careful in those lot numbers. That's where they came, that's where the mistake is. Lot 29 is, 27 is reversed there. So lot 26, 29, the larger lot that was 5.6 acres had a continuous upland of 100,000 at the time.
And after the lot line adjustment, how much?
I don't, I don't have that with me, but I'm sure it's over 40,000.
Seems like it.
I thought, I thought we might have done that. I just, I, I got too many projects I'm working on one time. I don't remember everything. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure that it was, it was met this current zoning for it.
Marsha, were you going to add something before I cut you off?
Yes, myself and John actually had a discussion. This plan does not show the wetlands on the existing lot. So the Walker's house, the, that portion of the lot has not had the wetlands delineated on it. And it is my belief that the, our regulations, regulations say that wetlands need to be shown. In addition, my concern is if you have a lot that you've not shown the wetlands on, that now has buffers that would apply. I think that, that would be the incorrect way to, to go. And I just, there was not a waiver asked for, but I believe that would definitely be a, a waverable type of item. I don't, I wouldn't agree to waive it. I think it needs to be shown. In the past, what the board's done is they waived for large tracts of vacant land that I would have called rearage land to the back. If you remember correctly, we've given some waivers, say for the backlands of a large lot, but I, in my recollection, can never remember waiving wetlands delineation on the front, the front inhabited part of a, of a lot.
I, I agree with you. We have done that on very large lots when there was going to be undeveloped area in the back. But we required a certain area of the, of the lot to be delineated. And, and I, it's not only this application, but we've got the same issue with the next one we're going to discuss. I, I agree with Marsha.
I also agree. It needs to be shown.
And that can be shown, that can be shown on a final plan. It doesn't have to, you know, it doesn't have to hold up an approval, but it does need to be on the final plan as a condition of approval.
Are you saying wetland delineation for both lots now that they triggered new buffers?
Yes, yes.
Can I speak on that a little bit too? I'm not trying to get into big arguments, but if, if the lot is already developed, we're not proposing any development on that lot. What is the purpose?
Who's to say someone couldn't go out there and dig a giant hole and mess up what would, would have been a wetland buffer where you, where there's wetlands and no one would even know.
Again, it's, it's what, it's, how can you patrol that in the whole, this whole town here that's?
Well, we can start by
I, I think Joel, I think, yeah, I think, I think what Marsha's saying Joel is now if Anderson comes in and develops the site and because there was no wetland triggered before, there's no awareness of where those wetlands are. Now if we delineate them and he goes out there and trudges through them, we can say, listen, you know, we know that your building that you were approved for wasn't impacted, but you can't just go out there and do anything you want now because you didn't have. Because now you do have wetland buffers that are enforceable based on any future construction. So anything outside of this little, what's been approved. I, I think, I think Marsha has a good point that that needs to be noted. Especially where Mr. Anderson felt pretty strongly that he didn't need, you know, a lot of engineering approvals, you know, based on, you know, just, I think it's not, it's a good practice to, especially as a bunch out there.
Okay, so
This applies to the Walker site is, is pretty much which one hasn't been delineated.
Right.
It's just where Rick lives. It's not something the Andersons, Andersons all does. It's just where Rick already lives.
And buffer rules, when we make this lot line adjustment are gonna apply, they're going to kick in. So they need to be delineated and I do not buy the philosophy that, hey, it'd be impossible to enforce around town. Well, it is a rule for the entire town. We all have to live with it, including me who has wetland on his property. And so that, that's not a justification for not enforcing the rules.
I agree.
You know, and especially where Rick's going to have a sizable lot now. I mean, there's potential that he's going to try and subdivide that into two lots, you know, down the road. So it, it seems to be the appropriate time to
He, he can't subdivide that. That, that wouldn't be, ever be subdivided.
That frontage.
I think, I think we're, we're splitting hairs over here on whether it can be subdivided or not. Our, our guidance on it is, is that the front lot has to show its wetlands and any wetlands to the site. So it needs an updated plan set since it's getting a lot line adjustment.
The point Marsha was making earlier is this could still be conditional approval with a plan set showing the wetlands and the buffers on the other lot. Because you're actually making the Walker lot bigger and better. It's just a matter of having those wetlands shown that they need in the future.
That can be added to the condition of approval.
All right. Does the board have any other questions or comments?
I think you need to accept the application as complete.
Thank you. Yes, that would be helpful. If, if the board is willing, a motion to accept the application is complete.
I'll make a motion to accept application 220-27 and 29-RC-20.
Second. Who, who is that? I'm sorry.
Ron.
Brand made
A motion by Jeff Brand and second.
Jeff, are you making the motion as complete with the amendments to adjust the map showing the correct lot?
I think that'll be part of the conditions approval because they got to submit a new plan set. Because we're going to require them, you know, as a condition of approval to do that. So
Oh, yeah, I see that.
We have a motion by and second by Al. Hi, Brand.
Brand, aye.
Brand rather, sorry, real call.
Brand, aye.
I muted it? No. Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Nap.
Aye.
Allard.
Allard, aye.
Application is accepted as complete. Moving on, do, does the board have any other questions?
None.
Hearing none, we'll open public comment. Is there? I'm sorry, I don't see the hand raiser. So if that's what you're, as I never guys, but star six to unmute your phone. Anyone else that has questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Does the board have any other questions? I can read this draft notice. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just commenting, I had none.
Jamie, I
Thank you. I can read the Yes, Marsha.
I just have one amendment to the draft notices decision. Number three, it said verify all improvements on prior approved site plan can be constructed as approved. I don't think that's necessary where we, we verified that the, that the lot, the site, site plan approved that was approved can in fact hold all those, those improvements.
And then I would suggest that we add in place of the two that have been tracked, that they correct the lot numbers on the revised plan.
I have a question. Is that just the demonstration plan you showed? Because for some reason I have, I, when I did the notice of decision, I had the right map and lot numbers.
I don't know. I'll take, I'm I don't know. I'm gonna have to go check with my draft people to find out what's going on. It'll be fixed.
Yeah.
All right, I am reading this from the website, so I hopefully get it right. I may need some help. So, here's the, oh, here we go with the draft notice decision. Dear applicant, this is to inform you that the planning board at its, what's today? July 7th meeting has conditionally approved your applications. Resubmit above, all of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Precedent, add owner's signature to the final plan, add the wetland scientist stamp and signature to the final plan. Wetland delineation is required for the entire site on Lot 220-27. Make the following plan revisions.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Yeah. And A would be.
Correct.
Correct lot numbers on plan.
Yep, correct lot numbers on plan to correctly reflect lot map numbers. The applicant survey shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the plans. Was there anything else under six that anybody that I'm missing? You mentioned full wetlands delineation on 27, but you didn't mention it on 29, or at least I didn't hear it.
That should already be, that's, that's already done.
29, Rick Walker's lot?
That is done.
29 is.
Yeah, that's.
27 is Walker's.
The one the Walkers is 27. That was here on the plans that the.
Yep, I just wrote my, I wrote my note wrong on the plan here. Thank you.
See how easy it is to do that?
Yep.
We don't allow you to make excuses, Joel.
And this is where I think, you know, Jeff's note, any future, you know, any future work or changes in plans, we should add to this as well, would require coming back to the planning board.
Hey, Jamie.
Number six.
I agree that should be added. I think it should be added as a new sentence to the first paragraph.
Okay.
Is it kind of a standard thing?
Right, you're seeing upwards says, please note if all precedent conditions to add a sentence on the end of there.
Is approval is final? Any modifications require resubmission to the board for approval, something like that?
Yeah, you're suggesting up at the paragraph at the top, or the, or you're saying after the end of the, the first sentence.
Yeah, after, after the first paragraph, after it says, precedent conditions are met and plans are certified, the approval is considered final. I would add your sentence right after that, Jeff. That's what I recommended added.
Okay, all right, got it.
I'm not sure why we're gonna change something that's been going, we've had for 10 years. I'm not sure what the, why we were gonna do that.
I think we were discussing earlier that it's not apparent to people that if the plans change, and because we're relying on the AOT now as a determining factor as opposed to Du Bois and King, if they come back after an AOT and change their plans, making sure they're notice that they would need further planning board approval if there's any changes to the plans. I think that was the intent of adding that. And it's usually in there somewhere else, you know, any change, if I remember correctly.
Isn't that a note that's already on our plan?
Yeah, it's on the plan. There is a note about changes being made here on the plan.
It says the subdivision regulations for town of Barrington are part of this plot. An approval of this plot is contingent on completion of all requirements of said subdivision regulations, excepting only those variances, modifications made and running by the planning board attached here.
Right, so.
All right.
But what we want to make.
Leave it off.
I, I, I still think it would be good to note that in the notice of decision, in particular because of AOT, but it could be the same thing with New Hampshire DOT. They could have the, everything's drawn up and they go, no, you gotta move the driveway 100 feet. Well, now that could really, you know, torch the.
Let's leave it for this one, and we'll talk about it and make a board decision in the, for future, instead of mucking this one up right now. So, number seven, for lot line adjustments, the applicant shall submit to the land use office a copy of the signed and notarized deed, which will affect the conveyance of the subject property before the plot is certified by the planning board. Once the plot is certified, the deed must be recorded simultaneously with the plot. For lot line adjustments where the property is in the same ownership deeds incorporating the adjustment must be provided. Final drawings, five sets of large black line plus one set of 11 by 17. Final approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed. The land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the plans, if there are significant changes to be made to the plans as specified above, one full-size paper check print must be sent to the planning department to review prior to producing these final drawings. I think we got it all covered. So, we'll be looking for a motion to approve this lot line adjustment.
I make a motion to approve. A lot line adjustment, an application 220-27 and 29-RC-20-LL.
I second that. Was that Steve with the second? Okay, there was a motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Steve Diamond. Allard.
Allard, aye.
Nap.
Aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Brand. Anderson, aye. Congratulations. Application is approved. Good luck, Joel.
Thank you very much.
And I believe you're next as well. You're doing the next one too?
I am.
All right, moving on then to 207-11 and 13 GR-20-LL. Owners, James Morrison, Rebecca A. Andrews, Liza J. Labelle, and Nicholas Donovan. Request by applicant for a lot line adjustment with waivers between Lot 11, 3.6 acres, and Lot 13, 12.92 acres. I'll let you explain, Joel.
Very good. I sent your color drawing, Barbara. Marsha, can we see that? Right away, if you have the plan.
We're gonna get you.
We're doing this lot line revision between 129 Pond Hill Road and 159 Pond Hill Road. You looked at the plan, the lot is not very square. I guess that's the best thing I could say. And it was because of other subdivisions that were happening earlier. And they were trying to, whatever they were trying to do, I kinda know what they were trying to do. Lot 12 was traded out a lot 13 years ago, 1983. And when they did that, they left a 50-foot strip, thinking that they may wanna subdivide and create a road or something else back there. That's why that lot looks like the way it does up there. So, we've had to, because of the size of the lots, in Lot 13, 159 Pond Hill Road, the house, the existing house that's there is a duplex. Because of the duplex, I've had to multiply all the lot, all of lot sizing requirements for the town because of that, like, I've had to go from 80,000 to 160,000, which is, which I'm at 170,000, so I see that. Area free of hydroic acid soils, open water, et cetera, needs to be 60,000. I've gotta double that to be 120. We're at 166,000. Also, I have to have contiguous uplands that's 35,000, so I have to double that to be 70,000, which I have ended up having 102,000. So, the lot sizing is correct. And then, again, you don't have my color drawing when I sent this afternoon to you.
John should have it.
Yeah, you told everybody as I sent it.
Give him a chance.
Yeah.
It was sent out, so it's in your email.
It was sent this afternoon to Barbara and Marsha. But that's all right.
See, John usually, he has to upload them to do this, so I'm not sure what the.
That's fine.
Can, can he just go share his screen? If he just opens it on his screen, he should be able to just do share his screen, like I have it up on mine right now.
Hopefully, I think he can hear you.
Let me.
Sleeping in the back room, I see his chair back there. He's got a pillow.
Can.
It doesn't really matter. So, we've done topography for the whole parcel, Lot 13. We've done delineation of parcel 13, and this is one of the ones I'm asking for a waiver to the wetlands delineation and boundary survey, and the topographic survey for Lot 11. Since Lot 11 is already developed, people already lived there. They built on the house, they built the house, garage, driveway. They have a pond on the property. It's only making the lot bigger by nine acres, so I was asking for a waiver for the wetland delineation, topography, and the boundary survey for that property.
Well, what's the end goal here? Why are they transferring this nine acres?
Can you guys see that?
Just for privacy, that's all it is. You can see the contours on it. It's pretty tough to be able to do anything else out there. It's just for the schools that own Lot 11 would like to have a little privacy by this piece of property while they have an opportunity. It's not for developing at all. It's not to let anything be developed. That's really what they're trying to do.
So, I'm gonna point out my concern regarding Lot 11, the fact that there is a house that I'm aware of that's here. This is the area that I believe needs to have the wetland delineation in particular. It's not vacant land. There's, there's, like Joel said, there's a house here, but we can't see anything. And this, which I believe does not conform and needs to show just like on the other site.
I just wanted.
Leave the visible area.
It's not something that I'm hiding from people. I'm not something that I, I didn't put on the plan. This is something that's gonna be, I'm gonna have to charge my client to do this. And it's not like, you know, an hour's worth of work. I've gotta hire a wetland scientist to delineate three and a half acres of wetlands. I have to go out and locate, physically locate, three and a half acres of wetlands. I have to go out and locate all the building. I have to do a boundary survey of that property. We're talking a couple thousand, maybe $3,000 worth of work here. So, it's already built on. If they're gonna get a permit, they're gonna have to get permits and do any delineation at the time anyways.
In the past, the board has, as a policy, has also done the option of, on a large tract, well, this is very large tract, had them identify the area that is developed, such as where the house is, any driveway, so that, I mean, that's an option for the board too as opposed to delineating the whole three acres. But that's been the policy of the board instead of giving a waiver.
So, all this is shown on the, on the GIS maps that you have. You just fill in the town's GIS maps. You pull up, you can get the aerial view of it. You see all the buildings, the parking lot, driveways.
Well, it's not just a policy. It's, it's in the regulations, which is why you're asking for a waiver. This is not a policy. This is a regulation that it be there.
Right, and that's why I asked for the waiver. Correct.
But with the, you know, I understand what you're saying, but without the wetlands delineated on the property, and we're creating a new property. I mean, it's not, you go back to, well, there's already a house and stuff there, which isn't shown on the plans, but you're really creating a new property. And in order, for the new property, they're gonna have to comply with all of the current regulations. In order to do that, they're gonna have to understand where the wetlands are and where, you know, relative, and where the houses are, setbacks, and so on and so forth. And also, so, and I doubt this case, because I think those are fairly construction. Is that true?
I know that when they built the house, they had to get wetland permits. Would it be all right if we submit those in lieu of me doing plans? It's not some plans that I did, so I can't put their plans, someone else's plans on my plans. But they have, they have the plans from whoever they hired at the time to do the wetland delineation, because they had to get a permit to build their pond. They had to get a permit to put their septic system up. So, if I, in lieu of me doing fieldwork and wetland delineation, if we submitted their information that they already have, would that be adequate?
Would that be in addition?
I think that would be.
Updating the plans to include to show the structures, driveways, wells, septic, so on and so forth?
Again, that's, that's not something I'm gonna do, because then I have to go out and physically locate it. They have plans that some other surveyor or some other engineer had done. So, to get their, to get their, which probably the city already, the town already has, is they had to get a building permit, so they had to get a septic design. The town has a septic design. They had to put the pond in. They had to get a wetland permit. They had to go through the town. They had to get all those done, so the town already has that information.
I mean, we're looking at a lot line, not creating a new, new lot though, Jeff, as well. So, you know, you had said you're creating a new piece of property. We're not creating a new piece of property. We're doing a lot line adjustment, just like the previous one.
Oh, yeah.
They're just adding.
You are, yes, you are. You're creating, this is gonna be one large property now. That is not, it is an existing property, but you're marrying that with another one. So, you're creating.
Right, so you're not.
You, I'm not saying you're creating, you know, the, the structures and things, but you are creating a new piece of property. It's not the same. You're combining two properties into one, essentially.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see it to say, I'm not saying I disagree with some of the others that you've said, but a subdivision where you take one piece of property and make many, this is just switching land from one existing piece of property to another. It's a lot line adjustment. It's not creating property, in, in my interpretation, of a lot line adjustment as opposed to a subdivision, you know? And I'm not saying I don't think the wetlands should be delineated, but it's not.
No, I, I'm not saying it's a subdivision. I'm just saying you're, you're creating a new entity. You know, it's gonna get taxed differently, you know, it's acreage is changed. So, yeah, I, I agree with you. This isn't a subdivision. It's not breaking property apart, dividing into parcels, creating new things, but you are, you are legally correct. You are creating some, a much larger property than what you started with in one case, and a much smaller property than what you started with in the other case.
And that's why we always do lots that's getting smaller that I do, do the wetland delineation and topography to prove that it can be zoning. This is, in this case, this lot that's existing out there is now gonna be from three and a half acres to be 12 and a half acres, or something like that.
Well, in, in my mind, and I'm talking out, kinda thinking out loud here, is if the plans were updated to including the structures that existed on site, the driveway, but the plans were referencing, and it could be attached as a supplement to the application, and it showed all the wetland delineations from the previous applications and approvals that were given, I might be amenable to that. and it showed all the wetland delineations from the previous applications and approvals that were given, I might be amenable to that.
So what would you like to see me located on the plan now?
Well, where the, where the structures are, where's the house, you know, any other structures that might be on the property, where's...
It's got a garage there as well, so I can show the house and garage.
Driveway, show those features, which is really, you know, kind of like the existing conditions plan.
That'd be fine.
And then, I don't know what the rest of the board though thinks about whether there could be a plan note and there could be an attachment as a supplement that shows that the wetlands have been mapped out for the property.
You know, Jeff, I think I'm with you on that. I think if this work has already been showing the existing structures in the wetlands, I see no reason to duplicate that. I think it could be attached as part of this application. I would be okay with that.
I just think that if, if they create a pond, they've got the approvals, they had to submit detailed plans, then if that work has already been done, I question whether we need to ask the person to pay to have that all done again. I agree with Marsha, though. We don't, we don't normally proceed or have waived the requirement without having that information in hand. The question is, if that information already exists in a formal form, whether we can accept that in lieu of that being added in additional work?
Well, I already asked for the waiver anyways, so it's not like I'm ignoring it, so I could just, you could still grant me the waiver based on receiving that information.
I don't know. What's the rest of the board? It sounds like Ron is amenable to that. Steve and Andy, Jamie, what do you guys think?
I'm fine with that.
I agree. I think if we have the, from Lot 11 that show wetlands and structures, then we could possibly grant the waiver for the nine acres that are being added on. Is that what you're saying, Jeff and others?
Well, I want to clarify what I'm saying. I think it's different with Joel's suggesting. To me, I would like to see that information before we grant the waiver, not grant the waiver assuming we get that information.
Right. But just to be, I'm trying to be clear that if, if we've given the information from previous surveys for Lot 11 that shows wetland delineation on that parcel as it existed before this merge, would we be then be inclined to grant a waiver on wetland delineation on the new nine acres that they're adding to it? So he doesn't have to go out there and do new work on nine acres?
Nine acres is all done. It's just that lot, Lot 11, that is the area that I'm not doing. Topography and wetlands are all on Lot 11 already.
It is, okay. My bad.
So Joel, even though it's not by another engineering company, I would be willing to, you know, certainly accept that if it shows the existing structures as well as the wetlands.
I can go out and locate the structures. That's, that's not a big cost to do that, so. But then we can, well, again, I'm probably going to go, I think, I know my clients had mentioned that they had, and I, I live right up here, so I saw the evolution of this whole thing. So I know they got, it's been fairly recent work there. So I know they had to get permits from the town and the state to do what they did out there. So I'm sure it's easy enough for me to find those plans and I'll, I'll get, submit them to the town.
And I am, I, just unclear, I do think that existing structures need to be added to this set of plans for Lot 11.
It will be.
Wetlands delineation.
I'm on board with you there, yes.
You know, I'm thinking that we might be able to accept a supplement to the application utilizing the work that's already been done. Marsha, what do you, what do you think of that?
Well, I was running over trying to look at our plans in the drawer. I actually couldn't find it. My concern is, you know, we, how, I'm not sure how old that plan is. I couldn't pull it out right away. But he did mention that there's a pond on, on site. I mean, there's improvements. I mean, it looks like based on the tax maps that there's considerable amount of wetland on this particular site. I don't know. If you give me a couple minutes, I'll go out, I'll go try and pull it out of the plan set again.
Yeah, I would just, I would just think in order to get all the permits to be able to build a pond and things, they must have done a detailed wetland survey of that property where they wouldn't have gotten approved.
Correct.
Right. How long, see, I just don't, I got to go pull, I got to go see if I can pull the plan.
Joel, how, how long ago was that done?
I don't know.
Five years, 10 years, 15 years?
Probably, I'm guessing. My problem is I've lived out there for 30 some years now, and it all seems like last year every time I drive by any place. Maybe 10 years ago they did this?
Okay.
The dredging thing from that might not be a record we have in town per se, because it would have been a state permit required. So it'd be a permit that was submitted to the state and got approval, not from the town of Barrington.
But we would have had to go through the conservation commission.
Well, they would have been notified to give comment before DEs broke.
And then there was a septic design out there, then recently built a garage out there, so I'm sure you got plans on that too.
So I, I think somebody else mentioned it, and I, I'm in agreement that maybe it was Mr. Allard. That, so if you were to put together to get that, submit, update the plans with the structures on your set of plans, that we probably ought to see those things before we grant the waivers to ensure that we have the material in hand?
We have at least, we actually have the, the permit request for the pond. I guess, I mean, it's, there is a pond. There's a very large lit area of wetlands. I assume where they dug out the pond, but that's just the wetlands permit application.
What's the year on that, Marsha?
I'm trying, because I'm just looking at tax map. Give me a chance here.
Than us trying to...
The pond was reset. The pond was 2017.
Well, my suggestion would be rather than pull it out, Marsha...
They built the garage in 2012, so.
My suggestion, Marsha, is rather than pull it out, I mean, I don't think there'd be any way that I'd say no to it, but, you know, I'm not going to, I don't feel comfortable proving without looking at it and reviewing it. So, so I think it needs to be a supplement to the application.
Yeah, I think, update the plans, get together a supplement. It could even be, you know, these documents be referenced. We can look at them, and then we could vote on the application.
So are you suggesting that to continue the application tonight till, for a month and after you have, so you have a chance to review?
I guess that's what I'm suggesting. I don't think this is going to be terribly complicated, but trying to do all this in real time, I don't think is working well. And that would give...
Take a prep.
Is now exiting.
I think that would give Joel time to put together the supplement, update the plans, and we have a nice, you know, finished product to look at and then proceed out of consideration or approval of the waiver.
Joel, you have a problem with that?
I don't. I wish it didn't have to wait for a whole month. That's fine, but it has to be.
Yeah, to me, the one part that, sorry, to me, the one part that sticks, I mean, I think it follows the rules, but it, before this lot line adjustment, Lot 13 had a narrow neck, and then it goes to a usable, sort of usable, larger area. Now it's a narrow neck that kind of goes nowhere. It's just a really weird shape. It's only about 30 or 40 feet wide as narrowest, but, I mean, it does follow the rules, I guess.
It's 50 feet at the narrowest, but I'm not trying to argue that. They, they thought that they were doing something. In 83, we thought we could subdivide a lot more pieces of land than we really, really could. That was prior to before the air's cold subdivision was done. So once air's cold subdivision went in there, there was no reason to have another 50-foot strip going anywhere. So that killed that thought. So, but they were already locked into that configuration of my land.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a formality with trying to get the lot size. Again, this is something that I didn't just envision in my brain. I went and talked to Marsha, why had these people as a client? Proposed this to her and reviewed it with her. I'm going to have to do something like this.
So you're saying the unusual pork chop is to keep enough land to make the duplex lot lie?
Yeah, that's all it is.
And I guess, and I guess that's my...
What you're saying is, is you needed that extra land to keep it conforming to have duplex.
To keep the duplex, yes, yeah.
The only thing I'll throw out there is, I'm trying to understand why we're so concerned with what's already built on Number 11 when they're just, someone's giving them more land, let's say. They're not proposing doing anything. I, I, that's one of my questions.
I guess that would be mine too, but that's fine.
Well, I think that would be consistent with the decision we made on the Walker property, though.
Yeah, and I'll give you my opinion on it.
I didn't ask for a waiver on that one. I am asking for a waiver on this one.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Marsha.
Um, God, I forgot what I was going to say. Well, and I'll just reiterate, my concern on this is you have a lot. And looking at pictures of it, there is a, there is a pond on it. There's, you know, cat and eye tails, whatever. And I would guess that almost half that lot is, is either part of the pond or wetland. So, you know, if somebody does, if somebody does anything to that lot, not everything requires a building permit. And there couldn't, can be disturbances to the wetland buffer for somebody who doesn't even realize there's a wetland buffer. And we're not going to have them delineated. So that, that was, that's where my concern is coming from, that and the consistency of what the board has done in the past in regard to identifying the buildable area on a lot when they do a lot line adjustment, at least the minimum developable size.
In Lot 11, the people that live on there are the ones that put the pond in. They're the ones that had the wetland delineated already. They are already aware of what wetlands are out there, so this isn't going to tell them any more than what they already know. That's why they had to get permits to put the pond in. They know where the wetlands are.
Well, that's just true, though. They don't require buffers.
I know you're trying to be consistent, but I'm not, not ignoring their, I've asked for a waiver, and I feel, you know, this is certainly a reasonable request on this one, because...
Well, one of the things to remember, though, is the state only gives us two criteria under which we can approve a waiver. One of those has to do with if it causes, if we decide that it'll pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, a granted waiver is not contrary to spirit and intent of the regulations. I think adding these things in the plan and a lot, in middle ground, adding these, being allowed to supplement your plans with the wetlands delineation from previous plans, I, I'm having a hard time seeing that that creates an unnecessary hardship. The other condition under which state says, the specific circumstances relative to the subdivision conditions of land in such subdivision indicate the waiver will probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Well, you know, I don't see any specific circumstances here that says that, you know, waiving those regulations is consistent with the intent of the regulations. So I'm not getting there with the two criteria that the state allows us to waive these requirements.
But are we extrapolating strict subdivision regulation to this lot line adjustment? I guess that's, I feel as though, you know, he's not looking to subdivide lots off it. He's conveying land from one property to another, and he's delineated the nine acre big piece, and Lot 11 is already existing. So I just kind of have, I'm struggling to wrap my head around the rationale behind it, and maybe I'm missing something.
Well, that's why, you know, I was proposing a beating in the middle, a solution that doesn't cause an undue hardship but still complies with our regulations. So, you know, I think, I think we need to follow our regulations whenever there is a clear indication that we meet one of the two, like the state.
And I think, I am concerned, this is Ron, I'm concerned too, that if we waived it for this situation, you know, the Walkers would be saying, why'd you waive it for them and not for me? The application right in front of them. We required the wetland delineation on their property.
Well, there's, that's why, I kind of thought that we, we had gotten it all when we did the, but the reason why is the wetland scientist focused on the five acre lot and didn't focus on Rick's small lot. So for him to finish the wetland delineation out there is a couple hundred dollars worth of work out there versus trying to do something in Lot 11, retiring a couple thousand dollars to do, for me to do something over there. That's why I didn't argue with, with the Walker's parcel. I feel that I get it. The wetland scientist can go out there and delineate a few more flags that he's almost got it all done as it is. And that's a small area that for me to locate and change the plan is pretty minimal, but where I...
Yeah, but Joel, we're allowing you to use the previous information, the wetland delineation, to reinforce Jeff's point. That does not seem like an unreasonable financial hardship.
That, what are you saying now? I'm sorry, I guess I didn't...
Where the board is willing to look at the previously done wetland delineation and not redo it.
Sure, sure. I agree with you.
That does not propose an unreasonable financial hardship.
No, 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 and I agree with you. It was just, you know, the chairman was starting to bring up the point about why do we need to do that? That's why I was talking along with what he was mentioning. That's why. Fine, if you want to do that middle of the road thing, that's fine with me too.
All right. That seems like the best course of action. I think that, I mean, my questions were just those. And I think the board as a whole would prefer the other route, and I think it seems simple enough. So do we need to vote on that action, Marsha, or are we just continuing for one month?
I make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I second.
A motion by Andy Knapp and seconded by Jeff Fran. Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Allard?
Allard, aye.
Can I ask for a pause in the vote?
Sure.
I just, just a technical question. Marsha, can we make a motion for continuance, or do they have to request a continuance? And then we act on, on the request?
I have a question. Maybe it just might, it's getting a little late. Did you actually accept this is complete already?
We did not.
Maybe you should do, do that first.
That's good, Marsha.
Pardon me? Are we not considering these additions to the application as opposed to...
Right, I'm like, can it, can it be complete if we're asking for more information?
Yes, technically it can. It's, it's almost there. You just got to a little bit of other information, and you've actually been kind of going back and forth about it. So you could, I mean, uncomfortable either way, but technically it could be. You practically had a public hearing on it now.
Act on the waivers, we can't act on the waivers before we accept the application, can we?
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, these are submittals, so probably that's true. So, yeah, continuance would probably work.
Let's do that. We'll finish our roll call. I think we've, we've got Diamond, we've got Allard, Bran?
Bran, aye.
Jennison, aye. Knapp?
Aye.
I lost track. I haven't... Name it, I don't believe. What's that?
Everyone but you said aye.
Jennison, aye. We'll see you next month, Joel.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good, hey, enjoy your rest of your vacation.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Yeah, I was...
Joel, what about the bear?
They caught it, I think it was 2:30 in the morning after you left.
Oh, good.
Tim said, I asked him about that, and he said, yeah, I think he said, like, yeah, all of a sudden, like, 2:30 at night, we heard this big bang. They got the bear. They got the bear.
Good.
Okay. Talk to everybody later.
All right. Take care.
Thank you.
They just, Jamie, you're on vacation. So your wife did not closet?
No, no. She's waiting patiently till I finish. All right. Uh, report some other committees. Anything? Unfinished business? Other business that may become before the board? All right. Time in place. Go ahead.
I just wanted everyone to keep thinking, um, I'll try and come up with a amendment to, uh, I guess it would be the subdivision regulations regarding. What Mark, um, from the highway department was talking about. You all got that email?
Yeah, I did. And I, we've been talking about that for a long time. So that's, that should be in the next batch of, uh, of regulation changes we're making.
Yep.
In the meantime, think about the, uh, the chapter that, that we have in front of us. Any corrections you want to forward on to Marcia and Jeff? To, uh, incorporate to the facilities and utilities and, um, if there's any tweaking to that draft notice of decision. Uh, lines that we'd like to add, if that's a thing as well, um, make notes on that. The next meeting will be August, um, same time. We have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Uh, roll call. Jennison, aye. Bran.
Bran, aye.
Nap. Aye. Allard.
Definitely aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Very good. I'll see you all in a month. Thank you so much.
Enjoy your vacation, Jamie.
Yes, enjoy your vacation.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Firebird perv on. Is now exiting.